Yes, if you're able, please rise for a moment of silence and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. First off, recognitions and presentations, and we do have a VACO achievement presentation tonight. Ms. Katie Boyle.
There you go. Yep, got it.
Zach, thank you. That does sound a lot better, doesn't it? Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, distinguished county staff, members of the public. Good evening. My name is Katie Boyle. I'm the Director of Government Affairs at the Virginia Association of Counties, and I'm so very pleased to be back in beautiful Montgomery County tonight on this lovely fall evening to celebrate your ongoing and continued success. I know you all are no strangers to VACO, and we're very grateful for Montgomery County's participation in the association. But just to provide some background about us, for those who may not be familiar, we were founded in 1934 to serve and support your efforts as county officials. We support counties through our advocacy work, our educational programs, member services, and our communications efforts. In 2003, we established our Achievement Award Program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services and identifying programs that could serve as models for other counties to emulate. So we're very excited to be celebrating 20 years of the Achievement Awards Program this year. So in keeping with our recent years, this program remains very competitive. This year, we received 100 entries, and we selected only 29 winning projects from 21 counties. So you all are in very elite company as winners. And I'm very proud to present Montgomery County's 2022 VACO Achievement Award for the Return to Home Program. So for those keeping score, this would be Montgomery County's seventh award, fifth win in a row. So I really want to congratulate you on your continued great work, and I look forward to coming back next year. So I know that your staff is here to speak about the Return to Home Program in more detail, but it was very heartwarming for me as an animal lover to read about the success of the program in reuniting lost pets with their owners, an 88% return rate. You know, that's a lot of happy pets and relieved owners. And it was just wonderful to read about the creativity and the partnerships involved in working across your county agencies and involving your community. I think really this work speaks to what a caring place Montgomery County is, and so I'm very honored and proud to present you all with your 2022 VACO Achievement Award. And so if it's all right with you, I think Ms. Mann is here to talk a little bit about the program, and I have a plaque to mark your achievement, and congratulations again. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you so much. So every single day, the Animal Care and Adoption Center handles calls from citizens having either found or lost a beloved pet. In 2021, we implemented the Return to Home Program. As part of this program, we rolled out a 24-hour online reporting system for lost and found pets. This connected directly to our shelter software, which not only allowed us to be more collaborative with animal control, so out in the field, they could check back in that software and see if that animal matched with any animals that had been reported, but it also really helped us to be able to get all that information in more detail. It included photographs and stories about the pet, and so it really allowed us to know when we had that pet specifically, and not only just know it, but know it immediately. And so it really helped us to give the owners peace of mind, be able to call them right away, be able to get that animal back into their home. It was really a collaborative event, collaborative program between animal control, between Animal Care and Adoption Center staff, and between the community. So we cannot thank you all enough for this award. So thank you, and thank you to our community for making it all possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Well done. Next up, we have our guideline for public address. Public address is the time for citizens to address the board on matters deserving. We will have a, there was a public sign-up sheet out front. I will go through that list first, then if anyone would like to come forward, they can. Each person will have four minutes as speaking as an individual or representative. All comments should be directed to the chair and other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. You'll need to start by saying your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statement or comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in any personal attacks, use of profanity, or abuse of language, or debate with the audience, and not address the supervisors. And then the first person we have up is John Ashley.
I'm sorry, let me have my magic work when I could sign up my name. I'm glad you could read it. They didn't have a pen sitting out there. Last week, we talked about the abduction is legal if perjury is committed, to commit it, and today, we're going to talk about what happens if you talk about it. So these laws are going to be copied, pasted off of the state of Virginia website. The first one is going to be unsworn declarations under penalty of perjury. And by the unsworn written declaration is, "I declare or certify, verify, or state under penalty of perjury that the foregoing is true and correct," like filing a motion in court. The second one is going to be 18.2, which is a criminal code, and is what is deemed perjury punishment on penalty. Any person who, and lawfully administered to on any occasion willfully swears falsely on such occasion touches on material, material thing. And then the bottom law is going to be 18.2, another criminal code inducing another to give false testimony sufficient, sufficiency of evidence. And it's any person procure or induces another to commit perjury or to give false testimony under oath. So the second page, we can read the top line. It's going to be the witness name, and then it's going to be the witness statement, and then on the witness report. "He is a court-appointed guardian at Lydum, and the father of the juvenile he is representing is John Paul Ashley. Mr. Hall received a phone call from Mr. Ashley on October 31st making these threats towards Mr. Hall's family." Now, if I threatened anyone, I would have been arrested, and so this is a material fact. No threat was made because I wasn't arrested. The next page, this is going to be the transcript of what I said. "You got a couple of daughters." Now, just for the record, this information came from his campaign website that he voluntarily put online. "You have a couple of daughters, I believe. What if one of them got kidnapped?" Don't take this as a threat, nothing. Don't, don't, don't take this the wrong way. I mean, what if one of them got kidnapped, and you know, you didn't call? They told you not to call the police, and you gave them the ransom money, and then your daughter never came back? I mean, it would make you stripper gear two in your head. Of course, they don't mention how I am talking about exactly what we talked about last week, about how my child was abducted and is perfectly fine. So the next page is going to be the motion to withdraw as guardian at Lydum. One, as an incident has arisen between the guardian at Lydum and the biological father of minor child, John P. Ashley, that the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department has been involved regarding this incident, a report has been filed, has been filed thereby, and as a result of the relationship between the guardian at Lydum and the biological father has been irreversibly damaged. Then the next page is the rest of the motion. The next page is going to be beginning of the second motion, and then the page after that, number 11. Last weekend, Mr. Ashley left a message for Mr. Hall, the guardian at Lydum, asking Mr. Hall how he would feel if his daughters were kidnapped. Because of this exchange, the guardian at Lydum asked to withdraw from the case. And then the bottom part I highlighted. Neither, neither has children whose safety could be threatened, and both have experienced cases like this. So either he lied, or the other lawyer has lied to him about a threat. And also, how is it a threat if I'm repeating the county policy? The last page, Virginia Bar Association. Naturally, adverse parties have conflicting goals and positions. However, merely because you disagree with the positions or tactics taken by your opponent does not mean that the lawyer advancing the position has acted unethically. So it's misrepresenting a material fact. And if the police tell the prosecutor that they do not see the drugs, drugs and guns, and the prosecutors say that they do see the drugs and gun, is that a difference between an opinion? Or is the standard for a fair trial different, depending which floor of the courthouse I get off on the elevator? Thank you, and I hope you all have a fantastic evening. Good night.
Thank you. Next up, Chris Waltz.
Chris Waltz, 1370 Ruby Street, here to talk about the merchant capital tax. I'm all for fairness, you know, maybe they do deserve a break. I don't have the figures. I'm trying to research it. But some of the arguments that were presented at last meeting were nonsense, as far as voluntary. I know of a house, a two-bedroom house, that the person, before they sold it, renovated the dining room, turned it into a bedroom, sold it as a three-bedroom house. No permits. It's still listed in the county property records. It's a two-bedroom house. There's a business that had property in the building listed as office space. They converted into apartments, again, without permits, without the safety things, sprinklers, designated parking that's required. You know, I understand they got caught. People finished their basements, kitchens, bathrooms, you know, and they don't get building permits, and they don't report it because then they get charged higher taxes. So there's a few bad apples. It sounds like you have an enforcement issue. You know, as well, I mean, are we going to get rid of building permits? You know, people underreport income. They lie on their income taxes. Are we going to get rid of those because there's a few bad apples? These businesses use the exact same resources everybody else. Go to Christiansburg. The police are there all the time. They use fire. They use rescue. They use police. They use our roads that I pay taxes for. Why shouldn't they? To drive their test, you know, to test drive their cars on to get their merchandise. Goes through the roads, just like my car does. And, you know, businesses aren't job creators. They are employers. They are middlemen. The manufacturers make the product. They buy them. The consumers. The consumers are the job creators. They're the people that keep businesses and businesses. If they don't have a good product, if they sell junk, or they don't have a good service, they're not in business very long. Then what are they, job destroyers? As well, businesses don't pay sales tax, consumers do. Businesses collect them as part of doing business. If they enter into an agreement with a credit card company and they get charged, that's voluntary. One of my favorite restaurants in Roanoke, The New Yorker, is a cash-only business. Taking credit cards is a choice that they make. And as far as unfair, personal property tax. I paid sales tax on my vehicle when I bought it, I still have to pay personal property tax every year on it. What's the difference between that and a merchant buying inventory and being taxed on it once a year? The difference is they don't pay sale tax when they buy it. So, you know, all these arguments that were made about it being unfair and voluntary, building permits are voluntary, like I just said. People do stuff and don't get them all the time. So, you know, if you want to make an argument, you know, let's not twist ourselves into pretzels to make a silly argument that just isn't factual at all. Thank you.
That concludes the list. However, if anyone would like to come forward, you'll have four minutes to address the board. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Bob Beard. I live here in Christiansburg. I want to say thank you for allowing me to get up here and speak this evening. I was reading this article regarding the Christiansburg renovations, and we've been talking about that for a while now, and this article primarily did a great job of highlighting and summarizing what was discussed and so forth, and the impact of inflation. And since you guys are the money guys, it's all about you guys. So we got inflation coming, we got to find some way as a part of the community to lower our expenses. So, and I've mentioned this in the past, is, you know, why is Christiansburg two and a half times more expensive as a remodel than Salem? I still haven't heard anything about it. I don't know if I'm supposed to go research that to the nth degree or not, but Salem got remodeled for 40 million, and we're at 100 million for Christiansburg. And so we're going to look at some other costs. So trying to build a school for 1,400 students, and they've only had 1,000 for the last five years. So boom. And you also, okay, let's talk about some more efficiencies. We have Auburn at 75% capacity, and East Montgomery at 65% capacity. So why can't we move students, redraw the lines, move students to those schools to address the overcrowding issues? Okay, you got Auburn Elementary School at full capacity, so we move kids from there to the Auburn Middle School, where it's at way below the capacity. Also, by doing this, you also help those other schools because there's classes not being taught to schools because they're underutilized, they're under capacity. And also, at East Montgomery, you got, the county average is 35% for lunch assistance, while East Montgomery is at 50%, and Blacksburg is at 15. So let's move some of the money around, let's help us, help East Montgomery become a better school, and we do that by redrawing the lines. All right? Some other things I want to talk about is the transgender model policy. Why did Montgomery County vote for that and approve that and be one of a handful of schools across the state that adopted that policy? There's only seven counties, I believe, that support this policy. And I want to know what effect that had on the CHS remodeling program? What was, was additional cost, or why we have to have generous or shared bathrooms with boys and girls at Christiansburg High School? That doesn't make any sense to me. And also, why we have to have a principal for each grade? You know, other schools don't have that. What is the issue at Christiansburg High School that needs to be addressed, that we have so many principals and such a cost? Also, what you guys need to ask is how many race incidents were there last year? For 400 states, there's only 10, okay? We had 30 students apply for transgender accommodations, and we only had 10 equity issues across. We have, they're spending $200,000 in admin costs to address the 10 equity issues. So those are the questions I want you guys to start asking. You guys look at those budgets for the school system. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward to address the board? You will have four minutes. Seeing no one come forward, I will close public address. Addendum.
No addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
No addendum. Do I have a motion to move into work session?
They're moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Fizikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Spoh?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chairwoman Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Board members, the first item under work session this evening relates to requests for tax exemptions. In your packet this evening, we have information from four agencies that have requested tax exemptions for real property that they currently hold. One is the Agape Center, one is the Community Health Center of the New River Valley, one is Montgomery Museum, and Lewis Miller Regional Arts Center, and one is New River Community Services, Mountain Empire Services of Southwest Incorporated. And Marty may have a little more to elaborate on these, but the purpose of the work session tonight is to see if there's any questions or concerns with moving these items forward to schedule for public hearing. So Marty?
I have nothing more to add.
Okay. Thank you. We do have some information that we're passing out. I know one of the requests from a couple of board members, I believe, were what were the dollars that were provided by the county to these agencies? And you have a summary here. This is information directly out of the fiscal year 23 budget book. So you have information on the Community Health Center, the Montgomery Museum, and New River Valley Community Services. Those are dollar amounts. And really, at this point, staff can try to answer any questions the board may have. And again, the purpose of this evening is not to make a decision on these requests, it's simply to see if the board wants to move forward with scheduling public hearings to consider these requests.
In years past, some supervisors were wondering why some large nonprofits were asking for this funding. Does anybody have any answer to that question? It was very hot and heavy a couple of years ago.
I'm not sure, when you say asking for funding...
Or, or this support.
What's in front of you is what's included in the annual operating budget for these agencies, and these have all been longstanding funding requests. For example, New River Valley Community Services is actually a mandated agency that we're required to fund.
And yet, we're not funding fully.
That's correct. We're not funding fully based on their request, yes ma'am.
Well, it's not their request, it's the state's request.
It is the state's request. The other jurisdictions are funding about the same level or less than we are, and we have discussed that with them. If we fund at the full amount, we will be funding a disproportionate share of the cost for the agency.
But it's a state-mandated number, is that correct?
The 10% is what the state requires. So each year, when we don't fund that level, we send a letter to the state that explains why we're not, and then things carry on.
What does carry on mean?
There, there's no impact that I'm aware of.
For us, but may be an impact for NRVCS, for example.
I don't think there is there here if you want them to answer that, but I don't think there is.
I would love to hear what NRVCS has to say about that. Don't walk too fast, James.
Sprint, right? Good evening. My name's James Pritchett, and I'm the Executive Director of New River Valley Community Services. I have with me Trish Cox, our Finance Director, and the question is what impact? Every year, we have to ask the local governments for the 10% match of the state funding they give us. As the county administrator knows, when we don't receive that 10% match, we have to file a waiver, and I come to the county administrator, as well as the other local governments, and we work out a justification, so to speak, as why the counties could not provide that. It is true that they say it is a 10% match, and if we do not receive that 10% match, the state can take some of that funding away from us. Has that ever happened? It hasn't, but it is clearly identified in the letter we receive that it could in the future. And so what we've been doing, at least since I've been the Executive Director, is trying to work with the local governments and educate them on that, as well as, I think, advocate for increases every year, which Montgomery County has been able to do, and we're very thankful and appreciate that. I think in the coming weeks, maybe even a month, I will be visiting each jurisdiction, each locality, and coming up with hopefully a plan that we could submit to the department and say, yes, we're not meeting the 10% match right now, but here's our plan moving forward. I am very thankful for Montgomery County, as well as another jurisdiction in our catchment area that has annually increased their match. You might ask how we got here to this large number, why it's so difficult to play catch-up. I think for years, the state really didn't enforce that, and so now they're enforcing it, and that gap has grown so large that it's difficult for local governments to come through and meet that demand. But I feel good that we have a plan, and at least the partners here in Montgomery County, we've been working that for several years, and that's what I continue to say to our State Department, is we're trying to work this, it is a large ask, and we're playing catch-up. I don't have the numbers with me off the top of my head because I thought we'd be talking about tax exemption status.
But can you speak to the pressure the state puts on you?
There is a lot of pressure, and I think for the past five years as well, Sarah's now on our board, Ms. Biggs has been on our board, that pressure has increased over the last five years about localities need to be paying their 10%. I recently was able to testify in front of a Senate committee about behavioral health concerns, and when I did, they actually went through our budget and said, hey, we noticed your localities aren't meeting the required match. Can you speak to that? Which I did, and talked about the increases, at least for two of our local governments in our catchment area. And each year, I also provide them with a list of all the in-kind contributions we receive from the partnering agencies like DSS or the regional jail. So it is tough, and I will continue to ask for the 10% because I'm mandated to by code, and I feel really good about what we've been doing with Montgomery County and seeing those increases annually.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have a question for them?
I just have a comment. Having served on that board for quite a while, I just want to publicly recognize the fact of what you do do with the funds that you have to meet the clients' needs and all the jurisdictions that you cover. You do a fantastic job with what you have, and James has always been upfront about having to ask for the money and, you know, and it's not going to come. I mean, that's always been a discussion, I guess, and still is at the board level. But, but thank you so much for what you do do.
Well, I will be back. I was telling the county administrator earlier this evening that, you know, I'm trying to schedule a meeting, we're trying to coordinate times to meet so we can come up with a plan that we can send to the state. Here's what we're doing.
So this, if you were granted the tax exempt, this would help you with your overall budget? Is what the point is, right?
Obviously. And if I can figure out a way to count that toward the in-kind...
We'll, we'll help you figure that out.
I would like to point out that Montgomery County client served by the agency is 39.5% and our funding is 48%. And this year, Montgomery County, I think, is the only one that increased.
There were two.
And what percent is that? Is that 5% or is that 7%? Is that 3%? Do you have any sense?
Not right here off the top of my head. I'd be scared to make a comment.
It's not even close to 10%. You can say that, though. Okay.
Yes, Montgomery County, back in, I guess, February, when we had our local government budget meeting, I was so thankful because Montgomery County pretty much led the charge, led the conversation in encouraging the increase, so we really do appreciate that. We also get in-kind from our school systems across the entire New River Valley, so thank you for that.
Supervisor Fizikowski, did you have a question for them?
I was just looking at, there are three parcels. Why are there three? How come you don't just consolidate everything in your new building? Or is that...
That's just how it's on the tax roll. I can't speak to that.
Okay.
But it's all in one location.
There are other organizations, of course, that the county supports, and a lot of them are funded on a formula, a population formula. Has that ever been considered, or...
I'm trying to think. When it comes to how the localities fund us, since we cover five, part of that is going back to the discussion about how do we get those increases so that they match, and every jurisdiction is pulling their weight, so to speak? And I think that gets back to trying to meet with them individually to come up with those plans and agree on a formula.
Yeah, and I kind of misspoke on this one. Because of the services that you provide, that may actually be skewed by going by population. I guess really what would be probably more appropriate is where the clients come from. So, thank you.
Does anybody else have a question or comment for them? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
As I stated earlier, Madam Chair, what I think staff is looking for, or what we need this evening is, we've got that under new business, I believe, to call for those public hearings. Let me make sure.
They're not under new business?
No, they're not under new business, but they're, the resolutions are prepared, and they're part of the tabs. If you wanted to add those, we could, or we could put them in the next meeting. It's up, it's up to the board. They would just be setting public hearings.
Yes.
I'd like to propose that we set the public hearings.
I just have one question. Do we, when we're, and we have here from FY '23, what we're already giving. Would they not want to, is there any way to offset what we're giving in comparison to their exemptions? In particular, I'm looking at, if I'm not correct, community health. We're giving them 38,000, over 38,000, which is an increase from last year, not mandated. And then the building rental costs, is that, how do we calculate that?
We don't, we currently don't.
The building rental cost is estimated based on a square footage estimate for the market rate times the amount of square footage that they use.
Thank you.
So it exceeds $64,000.
That's correct.
So they get that benefit...
Right.
Including what we give. And we have 46, 45 or 46 other outside agencies that we currently contribute to. Is that correct?
So...
Yes.
Supervisor King?
I know we had it in our budget, what we contribute to other agencies.
Yes, sir.
Could you all send us an email and refresh us what we are?
Sure.
And do, do we have a cutoff date that somebody could come and ask for tax exempt?
Yes, the current county policy is they have to submit their application by July 1, and which everybody who's before you tonight did.
Well, I'd like for us to... I'd like for us to look at moving it at least January or February. But across by July 1, or July, the end of July, we hadn't done the budget.
No, but this tax exemption, by your rules, doesn't take effect till January 1 of next year. So we're not talking about this year.
Okay.
In the Montgomery Museum request, they're requesting this year as well, though. In the letter, that was the cover page of the letter sent on May 27.
Just to give you some histories, we've had on occasion where people have applied and asked for retroactive exemption, and the board has never approved that.
Any other further discussion?
Are we looking at all of them?
Well, we're in work session, so we can't vote. But I think we're just looking for consensus on, do you want to, we could place them when we come out, the board can vote on them right away. You could put them at the end of new business, or we could put them at the next meeting.
And you're talking about vote on whether or not to schedule public hearings, not to do the tax exemption.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we have to have the public hearing before you can take any action.
I would like to bring up the request from the Free Clinic. Again, this is something that we've discussed in the past, and we haven't taken any action on it. And I believe the last time we discussed it, the majority of the board was in favor of not giving tax exemptions to property that is not improved. In other words, no building, it's just land. The issues with just land could kind of be complicated, as sometimes people change their mind, and they don't build there, and in turn, they just sell it off. So I'm definitely in favor of not giving exemptions to land. Now, I understand that we have two, that we currently have right now, that is just land. And I would also like to see those come off the tax exemption until they do put some kind of building on it and are serving the public in whatever way that they do. And I don't know if everybody is still kind of leaning that way, and I'm not saying, you know, again, it would take effect January 1st, so this year it wouldn't affect them if we made that decision later. But I think it's something that we probably, is an easy fix when we're giving out exemptions. I don't know if anybody else feels that way.
May I ask a question? So as the CEO of the United Way, the Community Health Center is a partner agency, do I get to ask questions? I just can't vote, I could, you know?
Well, if you have a conflict, you shouldn't participate at all, but I don't know.
You don't think that's a conflict?
I don't know. It's the first I've heard of it. I don't, I mean, I know who you work for, but I don't, I don't know the tie tying together.
It's a funding tie. So we raise money and, or we're a conduit of raising money and giving out to 22 partner agencies and programs in the area.
And you provide it to who?
To 22 different nonprofits.
But which ones, the ones before?
Community health.
Community health?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I think there's probably, at a minimum, probably an appearance.
Okay, so I'm not going to talk about Community Health Center. I think that we might want to ask those nonprofits what exactly, why they're holding, why they're holding the property without it being developed, and why they think that they should have a tax exempt on those pieces of property. Because I think it's easy to say that, but unless you know why, you know, you don't know whether it actually makes a lot of sense to do it.
Well, I mean, I would think that the reason that they haven't built anything is because they don't have the money to build it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you don't know, in fact, unless you ask, or they give us this information. We could at least ask.
They did, in the application, they did indicate that the recently purchased lots are for the purpose of constructing a new Community Health Center facility.
Mm-hmm. So...
I guess what I'm saying is, I think everybody here likes to help nonprofits, especially the ones that benefit our citizens. To me, it's a no-brainer. You want to help them. But how are they helping the citizens when they don't have anything sitting on the property to work with?
Well, in this instance, they bought the property to build on it. And so it sounds like they're going to build on it very soon, so why wouldn't they get, you know, the tax exempt status?
Because they're not doing anything now. When they get a building on it, then I would think they would come back to us and then ask for an exemption. It would be easier for me as far as supporting it.
Would there be a concern, Mr. McMahon, if someone had a property and we gave them an exemption, and then they sold the property? I realize the new person would not be exempt, but what I'm saying is the loss of that when they did not come through with what they potentially planned to do with the land.
No, I mean, just the, you guys review it, I can't remember if it's every three years or five years. Vicky, do you remember? Okay, every three years, these come up for renewal, and you guys review them? And if at any time the property no longer is doing what they said they were going to do, and for the purpose you granted the exemption, then the exemption automatically, by operation of law, just ends, and they have to start paying taxes. For the ones we've granted already that don't have anything on them, we'd have to wait for that three-year period. And then at that point, the board cannot renew it if you so choose.
Thank you. Yeah, that's kind of information I needed, so appreciate it.
So we do, after every three years, we reevaluate, and they have not built at that point, we could reconsider.
You could, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and they have to, in essence, reapply is what they do.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a consensus to move forward with the public hearing for all?
Yes.
We'll have that under new business when we move forward. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you. Next up, County Capital Improvement Plan update.
Board members, this evening, we have Scott Woodrum with us, who's going to introduce Thompson and Litten, I believe. Scott, I'll let you lead off, and then, I don't know who's tag teaming who tonight, so I'll recognize both of you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're here to talk to you tonight about the former Sheriff's Office Building. Jack Murphy with Thompson and Litten is our partner on this project. He'll be given, he'll be given a little bit of a history, and more importantly, focusing in on picking up at about the October 2019 timeframe, and discussing some of the things that we've learned with meeting with our stakeholders, the court services, staff, the magistrate, and folks at the jail as well, in regards to the proximity of this project to the jail and those functions. So I'll let Jack take it from there.
I do have a presentation here. It should be loaded and ready to go. Well, good evening. It's great to see everybody again. Really like your new chambers here. I've not had the opportunity to formally present, so everybody looks great up there. As Scott said, my name's Jack Murphy, I'm a Senior Vice President of Thompson and Litten, and I'm an architect, and I've been working with the county for a number of years. And one of the projects in particular, as Scott mentioned, is the former Sheriff's Office Building and attached dispatch center. Believe it or not, it's been six years when we initiated a very preliminary study on that building. Things have been a little stagnant here for the last couple of years while the county garage site project was being undertaken. But in reality, consideration of that site and that building actually dates back to 2007, 2008, when we were looking at the new courthouse and trying to resolve the town's parking requirements. There was actually an almost one-year process of trying to determine how many parking spaces we could achieve on the site. We also looked at other adjacent sites, but ultimately, the direction was to build the parking deck that's there now. So this area, the entire courthouse block, I refer to it as bounded by Main Street, Franklin, First Street, and then even Pepper, maybe all the way down to Roanoke. So that whole area has been evaluated as a whole for a number of years. So what I want to do is give you a little bit of a chronology of what has taken place. And I think several of you have probably heard this at one time or another over the years at various updating and work sessions, but real briefly, I'll just run you through the project as a whole, and how we got to where we are. And then, as Mr. Woodrum indicated, kind of focus in on where things have gone since 2019. So first off, as I mentioned, the courthouse parking analysis, the entire site was evaluated. That considered the location where the sheriff was, it considered the former magistrate building, it considered options for moving the sheriff to where they are now. A lot of this took place before we even knew there was going to be a new courthouse building. So there's been a lot of evaluation, I guess is the best way to say, and background to the site and the impact of this site as a whole for multiple projects. In 2015, the county had proposed, shortly after the sheriff vacated the building and moved into the new public safety building, the county proposed, looking at the location that the magistrate is currently in, which is rented space on Franklin Street, and where the court services are located, which is a county-owned building at the corner, the former church there, and the corner of Radford Road and Depot Street. And the thinking was, if those services who are associated with a lot of the jail and courthouse functions were co-located to this site, that it would make good financial sense for the county as well as operations. So Thompson and Litten, through our term contract, was asked to look at that from a very high-level preliminary architectural report perspective. And we also included an evaluation of the sheriff's building and physical needs assessment, and then met very briefly with the magistrate and the head of the court services department at that time, to determine what their needs were currently, and then projecting them some into the future. We also had a cost estimate associated with that to address those physical needs and any changes that would be needed if those functions were to move into that building. At that point, because of the scope and scale of the project, the county solicited procurement for AE services, we obviously interviewed for the work and were selected to do that. And at that point, the first order of business was to reevaluate the original study, because a couple of years had passed, and determine whether or not it was still a viable solution. We began down that path, but then shortly thereafter, there was other options and other considerations, including would it make more sense for a single-story building versus trying to renovate a two-story building? From that point, we went to multiple work sessions to discuss that, what that might look like. Ultimately, it led into the former magistrate Fleeger Building discussions, and I think most of you know how that transpired, and ultimately, the board agreed that the best use at that point was to demolish that building. And that was after, you know, extended separate evaluation of that building. So that kind of brings us up to the resolution that the board made in 2019, which, hard to read here, but here's the main part of the resolution itself, that you resolved to authorize the renovation of the former Taylor Souter Office Building, which is, we refer to as a former sheriff's facility, for reuse by the magistrate and court services function, and the demolition of the Fleeger Annex Building. So from that point forward, we knew that, and we learned a valuable lesson with the Fleeger Building, that part of the reason why the decision to demolish it was because it had fallen into disrepair, and there were leaks that were unknown, just contributed to the condition of the building. Around that same time, the sheriff's building, it was observed that there were some roof problems, a scan had been performed, a lot of roof insulation was saturated, and we felt that at least minimal repairs needed to be done to preserve that shell. So a portion of the roof membrane was replaced, the saturated insulation was removed, replaced just to match what was there. And then additionally, a new coil was added to the HVAC unit on the roof to help with humidity control and provide minimal heating in the building. I think all in all, those repairs totaled around $27,000 at that time. Took about a year later for us to get to, this is some images of the roof repair that Took almost a year before we were able to get the Fleeger project under contract and demolished, and you all know that was right in the throes of the height of COVID, which contributed to that. But that all went rather successfully. Part of when we started to reinitiate the project, there was more discussions about the possibility of combining this project with some of the jail functions and the transfer inmates, and creating a secure environment for that transfer, as well as integrating that function with the magistrate. As you all know, that's pretty closely related in terms of the booking and processing of inmates. That's when we came back to the board and started talking about that possibility of potentially a new single-story structure. This is what the site looks like today. You can see grass is replaced where the former magistrate or Fleeger Building was. It's opened that courthouse square a bit. But one thing you can see there now is the remaining building of the sheriff's building. And I've compared this to the street context that once was maybe a smiling set of teeth is now, has only maybe one or two teeth remaining there, and it kind of appears a little out of scale along that street front. But I think more importantly, if you notice this minor opening in the lower-right photo, between the sheriff's building and the jail now, and that's kind of literally a bottleneck for people and security issues, but that was also the area that was being looked at for a potential vehicle Sallyport for that transfer of inmates and that interface with the magistrate. So that's pretty much gotten us to where we are today. We did have a formal restart of the project in July, as Mr. Woodrum indicated, where we came together with all the stakeholders, some of the county staff, and also the representatives from the sheriff, and some representatives from the jail itself, to talk about the project as a whole, recognizing that several years had gone by, we needed to go back and visit in greater depth and detail what the specific program requirements were, and adjacencies for the magistrate and court services. And then bring this third component into the project now, is to really look hard at this jail interface and that process of bringing in and out inmates, both from the regional jail, as well as some of the localities for court services, or for court days and so forth. So it's a very active area that's operational, you know, 24/7, seven days a week, 365 days a year, the same as the magistrate's office is. So those were our marching orders. We started out by meeting with the, again, with court services and the magistrate's office. We started out by meeting with the, again, with court services and the magistrate's office. And as you can see here from our original study, we we had estimated a need for a little over six thousand square feet. The existing sheriff's building and mag and dispatch center actually is only fifty-nine-hundred square feet. But because we had planned for a number of shared spaces, particularly for the staff and internal spaces, that offset that that additional square footage need. And we also had a small addition for vertical circulation of a handicap elevator, new stairway that was co-compliant, and a new entrance lobby. Again, those were all going to be shared spaces. With our new update, you can see our our total has increased a bit, but really, that's more attributable to the fact that these services have made it pretty clear that while they both have a lot to do with courts in general and and corrections, that they don't really want to interface with each other. They have a different type of clientele, if you might might say. And they should be separated, they should have separate entries, they they, co-locating is fine, but allowing the two functions to cross over really would prove to be difficult for them. So we we had some new things to to think about and consider after they shared that information with us. And they made it pretty clear that that we needed to find a way to to clearly differentiate between the the spaces as not only within the building, but outside the circulation, parking, that sort of thing. But ultimately, our analysis of that building and what they needed, it was steering us in the direction that the existing building was going to be too small and not really work correctly. So we decided to, additional considerations that were this third component now with the jail as well. So how to have that transfer of the custody of inmates and and for both the jail and with the regional jail, how can we preserve that and create a secure environment? And then also, there's opportunities here because we know the jail has other needs within booking and intake process, not part of this project, but we know that they're there. We don't want to shoehorn them or paint ourselves into a corner, prevent that from happening in the future. And then also, if you might all be well aware, that the public safety building really has no handicap parking right now that's within close proximity of of the public safety building. That's kind of been a problem for the the jail as well. And then finally, we just know that since the public safety building was constructed, there was a need for a full-size generator. The only place to locate it on the site is in the middle of the parking lot. And the access and utilities is something else that's been added to the the formula now. And that thoroughfare that exists now between the sheriff's building and the jail is right where all those utilities go through. So it's another consideration we need to be well aware of and and design around. So ultimately, we we've come to the decision in working with county staff that it just is not feasible to to accommodate all the safety, security, and operational needs of the stakeholders through the renovation of the existing building. So we decided to take a look at what we could do to accommodate all that. So this aerial view here is pretty recent. You can see the the grassy area where the, can I go up there? I don't think it does. You see the, oh, yes, you can see that this is the grassy area where the magistrate used to be, the outline of the jail, existing sheriff and dispatch center here. I alluded to the the generator, which is located here in the middle of the parking lot. And you can actually see through the coloration through, under the sidewalk, straight on through the generator to power pole on the sidewalk here. And that's a a major duck bank of utilities servicing the the public safety building. A few other site constraints are, you see this colored lighter colored parking area, that's the underground storage retention that was part of the courthouse project. There's also a water quality unit there. If some of you may recall that there's also a right-of-way that, oops, I'm sorry, went the wrong way. How do I let that go? There we go. Stay there for a second. There is a right-of-way that we need to maintain that runs through the entire site, behind the courthouse and behind the public safety building. And then, of course, the the jail itself has its own vehicles that that need to be maintained and how the process, again, of transfer of inmates takes place. So all constraints that we were taking into consideration as we began to look at the possibility of a new standalone building to accommodate the the other functions. So here's a plan that we outlined where the the former buildings, former building was and where the current sheriff, former sheriff's building and dispatch center were, and a plan that resets itself back from the road a little bit. But the the main driving force here is the location of a vehicle Sallyport. And all of this is able to to work in a very clearly defined site circulation. There's specific entries and access points for the court services on on this side. And then on the other, the magistrate entrance is there. If we remove those buildings, you can see the additional parking that would be available. We can provide additional handicap parking closer to both the jail and the public safety building. This plan also allows for secure staff parking for both magistrate and the court services, something we were not able to accommodate in the previous plan. But I think overall, it's a scale to the block that kind of works a little better than that single tooth, so to speak, that I alluded to before. So this plan reflects the needs that we learned from the our programming meetings. It's not a detailed layout right now, I'm just showing you massing more than anything. We did develop a very conceptual rendering of what that could look like, set back from the road as a single-story building. We were influenced a bit by the other context of within town there. You can see in the upper right-hand corner, the, I believe that's a currently inhabited by an insurance company there now. But it's a very attractive building, and I think one that's fitting in the other character of the town of Christiansburg. So we're allowing that to influence our design a bit. Certainly, it's a very high level to illustrate scale, some of the materials that we might use, and what it might look like from that intersection, because it would be set down, that grade slopes away from from First Street a bit. But we'd be maintaining the existing entranceways from First Street. There'd be no new curb cuts or entries off of Franklin Street either. So I think it it works well with the site, is able to fit in nicely between those other site constraints that we have. But obviously, a little more evaluation is going to be necessary. So I'd say, first off, just the idea and the concept of of a single-story structure, if that's something that that is amenable to to the board, because it is contrary to to the resolution, bless you, that that was signed three years ago. We do still need to confirm the parking space count with this new plan. We'd actually lose a few spaces, but we get them in the places where they need to be. And then I think we're able to address multiple issues for the site as a whole with the with this new proposal. So, you know, we've looked at it from a high level, from a cost standpoint, but obviously, if the board chooses to provide direction to to look at this further, we get into a much more detailed cost estimate once we have an actual floor plan. So it's a lot of information, I know. Here to answer your questions or concerns that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. We'll go around the room and see if we have some questions and our comments. Supervisor Demonts?
Thank you. It's good to see you. It's been a long time.
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome back. On the old sheriff's office building, are there any historical considerations that we need to be aware of for that building? And is there anything that could?
It's not unlike the magistrate building, it's not.
Fleeger Building?
It's, that's right, former magistrate Fleeger Building. It's comprised of actually three buildings. There's the front portion, which actually was construction constructed in the, I want to say eighteen eighty, in that time period. And then in nineteen eighty, around the time that the jail was constructed, an addition about the same size was added, as well as the smaller, single-story dispatch building next to it. If you've been by it recently, you can see the, some of the features of the front of it are really in disrepair, the front portico has kind of fallen off the building, and it's it's not in the the best condition from the exterior.
Is it listed anywhere or?
I'm sorry, I didn't finish my thought today. It's similar to Fleeger Building that it contributes to a historical area, but it is not specifically.
So it's not listed as a landmark, it's just a contributing structure?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I apologize, this is going to be a question that I should know the answer to, but I don't. On slide number sixteen, the Sallyport location is where the six black little automobiles are, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And I know that this is a very beginning drawing for this, but that means it's closed on each end.
That's right.
Six vehicles can fit if needed, but it would be closed and secured on both ends.
That's right.
Okay.
It, you know, we'd make it blend in with the buildings as much as possible, we would have a roof over it, but probably not heated or cooled. But a Sallyport in general, you know, only one door at a time can be open, and there's space in there to to accommodate, you know, a multiple vehicles because they could be coming from different areas at any time.
Okay. And then I think with your additional considerations, the four items that you listed there would be all of my questions. I know you can't answer those tonight. Most importantly, to me, would be, are we going to be able to get the parking spaces required by the zoning ordinance for the town of Christiansburg? And then, of course, we have, it looks like four point seven million already set aside for this project, for the renovation of the old buildings. So it will be interesting to learn if we move further, what the actual cost would be to demo and then renovate.
That, my understanding of four point seven included a Sallyport as well. I can tell you our high-level cost figures, not knowing every specific component, that would be some of the non-construction costs, whether they're part of it or not, that we're probably at close to that mark, maybe.
Does that include demo?
Yes.
Okay. Do we anticipate, this is, I know the answer to this already, you can anticipate, do we anticipate any environmental factors that would make demolition more challenging for the existing structures?
There are some hazardous materials, but nothing out of the ordinary, some asbestos and things that would normally be expected at this time. I mean, certainly, costs in general, everybody knows what's going on in the construction environment and what what you've been faced with other projects. You know, the predictions, projections are that inflation will level off a little here, but probably not return to previous pre-COVID state. There's still concerns with both labor and material supply chain shortages and other things that are impacting those things. I learned today that one of the reasons why there's a shortage of things like copper, because of the electric car industry and how that's booming. But also, just, you've all heard about chips, you know, and from cars to refrigerators and and that kind of thing. It impacts security devices and emergency egress things.
Right.
But we have taken that into account. We've tried to escalate prices to where we are. We've seen, we've bid other projects of similar scale. And I I do think that close to five million dollar range is attainable, but again, it it requires further research and a little more detailed research. As far as the parking goes, I guess it's a little chicken and egg. I don't want to go explore that without the board saying, go and explore it.
Right. I appreciate that you've involved the stakeholders in the planning for this. I think this this board was especially attuned to the need for some sort of more secure connection to the jail. And I think this plan answers that. I'm interested to see how it moves forward. So thank you for the update, Jack. Again, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Ben?
Thank you. You were talking about the parking spaces, and you said they'd be moving around. How many do we have today? And how many are in this drawing?
There is approximately a hundred there today, just in this area. It doesn't count all the other areas. And the new plan that I'm showing right here shows about almost forty less.
Is there any room for a parking garage? Not counting the parking garage that's already there, because we can't build on top of it, right?
Well, one of the things that made the previous parking deck cost-effective is that we were able to create all parking spaces, there's no ramps because they don't intercommunicate, there's access from beach level. It was not designed to go up because, again, that footprint would be so small, it'd be hard to get those ramps in there. It would not be a cost-effective solution. Now, I will say, and when we did the evaluation for the courthouse, that the new parking structure provided more than what was required at that time for the courthouse, and that it allowed, the the zoning allows parking within six hundred feet, I believe is the total within the neighborhood. So if you could identify other areas, I understand there may be some that could contribute to that on those overflow days. There's ways to address it, I guess, is what I'm trying to convey.
So there's ways to be within the requirements of town of Christiansburg? From what you, okay.
Yes, ma'am, from what I think.
So where are the handicap parking spots now?
So on this plan, and if what you have, it's a little hard to see because of the lighting, but there there's two.
No, I mean, today.
There are, there is one here, and one here, and then one here, and one here.
So on the new one, I see four also, and I, oh, I see six.
Six. There's two for each of function.
And that's all that's needed? As far as?
It's a percentage of the parking spaces that are provided.
I have a question for Mr. Meadows. So I understand we have a charging station somewhere around this building, right?
I don't think we.
Or somewhere?
We we have a charging station in front of this building, but we haven't put one in this area yet.
Were, was anybody talking about having a charging station at each of the county buildings at some point in time?
At some point.
Like, what was the plan of, was there any plan?
We have not, we do not have a concrete plan for moving forward. Matter of fact, I think the Sustainability Committee's meeting again this week, and I know that's something that's come before them in the past.
Okay. And this proposal should set us up well for the next twenty to thirty years, is that correct? What is, what's the timeframe on this?
It is, I mean, the projections for the needs, the programmatic needs for the magistrate and court services, we try to project out as far as we can and provide a little additional growth space, certainly with regard to the that interface with the jail and being, allowing them to undertake modifications for their booking and intake process, that this would support that.
And that's basically using, like, the growth that we're under right now, as far as population growth and growth of crime and stuff like that, right?
Right. And we're relying on the magistrate and court services to to provide that direction to us in terms of the the growth that they foresee.
And so all of your customers or key? And so all of your customers or key people really like this design? Did they say that?
I'll refer to Mr. Woodham on that one. Best to my knowledge, everyone's on board with, with what's here.
What kind of shortcomings have they brought up?
I think, in regard, I don't want to speak. Brad may be able to help me a little bit, but this is, that, you know, safety first, this is a huge step toward providing a more appropriate inmate, prisoner transfer, the custody of inmates, that kind of thing. In regards to the actual footprint of the building, we have been in communication with court services and with the magistrate, and after receiving their input, Jack and his staff plugging those spaces into, into this box, if you will. And so, the, this, I'll call it centrally locating it in this parking area is a, is a favorable option amongst all the stakeholders.
So you did the design and then all the stakeholders said, yes, we like that?
No, we actually, we met with all the stakeholders first to say, hey, we're kicking this off, we're going down this path, we want to come and meet with you and find out what it is you need.
And then Jack did his magic, and then the stakeholders were showing it.
They, they've reviewed a preliminary plan, both the site plan as well as a layout of what a floor plan might look like.
They, they have not yet, they have not yet reviewed that. You all come first.
Okay, thank you.
So, so they have not seen a floor plan. They will after we, after tonight. So you all come first. So that's, that is where we are.
Is there a way to make these buildings so that they could go up at some point in time? Let's say that the whole jail complex moves fifty years from now, but we can preserve at least some piece of property on this footprint, and these buildings could go up a floor or two? I know there'd be extra costs, but you know.
The answer is yes, and it, it has a cost. I would venture to say it could be as much as twenty to twenty-five percent more because we'd be increasing foundations, the structural and the roof itself, those, those kinds of components. We'd have to plan for elevators, and then you also need to have at least two stairways. So it would increase those costs in that planning. We make it bigger to accommodate more people will require more parking, too. Maybe if the jail were to go away, then that would provide that, that additional space.
That's enough.
Okay.
That's enough, thank you.
I couldn't expand on that concept, but.
Yeah, I bet, I bet, I bet. Can you explain that secure parking, what that, that, on the new proposal, what that actually, you know, it's a box right now?
Yes.
What makes it secure?
Well, from the street level, the, the front portion here coming across, it would be a solid screen wall, and then once you make that turn around, this would be a securely operated gate access control, and then that would be a fence along the rear portion there.
And what, what again would use that secure parking?
That's for the magistrate and court services staff only.
Gotcha. That's all I have, thank you.
Supervisor Shepard.
I don't have any questions. I will say, it looks like that, that looks like that'll work a whole lot better than what we already have, as far as the whole arrest process and magistrate, you know, getting them to the jail, so I like it.
Supervisor Fizikowski.
I like what I'm seeing. I've made a lot of trips across that parking lot over the years with people that really weren't that cooperative, and this solves that problem. The, the water storage, the runoff, I guess, that's in the parking lot now, is that, would that be an issue? Would that have to be dug back up in order to put the building in?
It would not, and this site plan specifically avoids that, based on, since virtually all this area is considered impervious now, we do need to add back a little bit of green space. You've seen some of it indicated around the building, but I think if we keep this under an acre of disturbance, that the stormwater quality will, will not come into the, to the project at all.
And I know we've been talking a lot about parking. When the town looks at this, wouldn't they take into consideration the parking, the top deck of the courthouse, too, as part of the?
I would hope so.
Okay, I didn't know if you've made, had some experience with that.
Well, we, we, we did many years ago, and that was why the entire courthouse square was, was part of the evaluation, because it was kind of the timeliness of when things were being used as well. And certainly, the county had also offered back to the, the town that available parking in some areas during weekends and some of their other events when court and so forth is not in operation.
Yeah, I mean, that's very true. Different times when you're driving by there, sometimes the, that top deck is underutilized, so I would think that would, that would be, that would play into the calculation. Now, one of the, one of the other things I was wondering is, I, I know you, you talked about shared spaces between the magistrate and the court services, but they're wanting an extra six, almost six hundred square feet? Was that all shared space?
Primarily, it was from the first plan, the, the whole entrance area, you know, the entry lobby, the staff lounge, for lack of a better, lunchroom, that sort of thing, that, that sort of space. There was a combined conference room that they could both use, those sorts of things, and it was pretty clear that they needed to be.
Yeah, they definitely need to be separated. I'm, I'm all about that, and that's one of the things that upset me about the, the original plan, because it just shoved adults and juveniles right together, and that's, you're just asking for trouble. And why we haven't had more problems with our current setup, I think we're just lucky. So I, I really think this solves it. I hope a lot of it can, can come to fruition and get worked out, but I think that's, I think that's all the questions I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor King.
On, on the renovation, we added a Sally Port, is that correct?
There were a couple of plans that were looked at back in twenty twenty possibility, and they were not drive-through Sally Ports. It was just a, a space that was enclosed between the, the two buildings that kind of limited just how much could take place in, in there. But yes, there was a, a look at that some time back.
When we first started talking about this, I guess nineteen or so, between the difference between renovation and new was over five hundred thousand dollars. What's the difference now?
Don't have a final number for you right now. That's, we, we gotta devise the, finalize the floor plan and, and what the, I mean, I could look at square foot costs from a high level, and that's, as I said before, that I think it's very close to that figure that was attached to your CIP.
Okay, I, I just want to read everybody something. The county practiced renovation and repurposing vacant buildings, which were described the way for the locality to both physically responsible and environmentally conscious and to their community. In turn, this is just saying, as we voted before, not everybody, because everybody wasn't here. I'm just a firm believer in renovations, if we can make them safe. I'm also a believer in saving taxpayers money, as long as we can do it safely for the staff and everybody. And that's all I got to say.
Yes, sir. Vice Chair Biggs.
Good to see you again, and I'm like Supervisor Demoss, I'm really glad that you went to the boots on the ground to get what they felt was important. I think that is important because they're the ones that are going to be working in the facility. I like the concept. I like the security that I see in the concept. And Supervisor Bone brought up all of my concerns as far as future growth. I really am concerned about that because I remember when we built this building and we planned it to be for, you know, twenty to twenty-five years, when we built, built the courthouse, and the courthouse has already gone beyond what we thought it would at this time. So I'm, I'm just, in this model, if we went this way, if there was a need, like Supervisor Bone brought up, for further growth, what I heard you say would be, in the planning of it, you'd have to sort of plan the foundation and the roof if you were going to go up, and then the other issue would, of course, be the parking. So I would sort of like to know, I'm just really into, you know, like, if you're going to plan something, you really need to make sure that you're going to meet the needs of growth, and I, I foresee our county continuing to grow and have needs, and that would be one thing I would sort of be a little concerned about. But like you said, that's going to be additional cost, but if you're planning for the future, you need to sort of think, what is it going to look like? What is the need going to be? You know, and, but I like the concept, and I understand what Supervisor King is, is talking about, but it looks like to me, based on the needs, that we certainly need to do a redo, and it looks like you've tried to do that and, you know, put everything together in one complex. So I appreciate all your work so far, and I'm ready to move ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair Biggs. I also agree that I like this layout, and I know that there is an issue with the parking, but you said that there could also be consideration of six hundred feet, is that correct, of possible accessible, and I know some to the left, looking at this diagram, left, there are some buildings, and there's a, in between, there's some parking that is not utilized, if I'm correct, so there would be accessible there. And then, as I think Supervisor Fizikowski said, on the town side, when they have events like the free downtown concerts and all, this is a great, people park here all the time on the weekends when it's available. Going back to this design, from the beginning, I have advocated, safety is first and foremost, and I appreciate you all speaking with the stakeholders. I've also spoken with Chief Magistrate Long, and their major concern was security and safety. Safety not only for their employees, but safety for the general public and law enforcement, and she advocated greatly to me about how this is needed for law enforcement, safety for the public as well. You talked about the need of how things have to be separate. If I'm not mistaken, there may be some legal requirements that they have to be separate. Obviously, it'd be a good idea not to have adults and juveniles together, but I think there are some state requirements that require them to be separate. This also with the Sally Port helps enclosed, and that way, that direct interface with the magistrate, that if, you know, a scuffle or something happened, it is enclosed in every, it's in, it's in that area, so it was safety for everyone. Also like the secured parking lot, because that came up in discussion about employees and making sure that they're secured going in and out, not with, you know, with the general public. Also, too, you think about, if someone's using accessibility for citizens, this makes a lot of sense for these court services and magistrate to be together. Somebody that might need a service of magistrate could be in a very, it might be domestic, it could be traumatic for them, they're trying to work them through the process, there's other legal processes that you need to go, and sometimes that's hard to say, well, let me give you directions to Radford Street, where you're going to have to go to fill out this paperwork, to start the process. It'd be much easier, we would can say, all right, we're going to go to the other side of the building, you're going to use this entrance, and also to have that separation of waiting area that if you have, maybe someone's going to swear out a warrant, then the other person's going to counter swear out a warrant, you don't want them in the same area together, you want to be able to control that to keep it, to keep it safe. So I am all for moving forward for this. I do appreciate this board, in prior work sessions, we had listed this as a priority to move forward on this. And with this plan, you're saying that's going to be, and of course, we have, getting into the details, about four point seven million, this is going to be about the cost you're thinking.
Well, we understand that that's what the budget figure is, and that there's, there's ways to get there, but I think when we have a more detailed plan and we understand exactly what the parking requirements are going to be, that sort of thing, then I feel at that point, I could give you a much more detailed cost estimate.
Okay, there you go.
And that is, thank you for mentioning that. Again, the, the purpose of tonight was, is to bring you up to speed on this project and just where things have evolved, and what the staff would be looking for tonight, once the discussion is over, is if you want us to continue to develop this plan to bring back for some final numbers or, or not.
Well, I think that we've waited long enough, we need to move forward, but I'll see what the consensus.
I have just a couple of, sorry. I have a question related to planning for the excess load to add in the future. So, correct me if I'm wrong, building, building codes change every three years. How often do building codes, or do they change, related to load? That would be my primary concern about trying to plan for the addition of a second story in twenty, thirty, forty years. You could have several building code updates between the construction and then the addition, that then you've invested extra money on the construction and you're still not compliant with the code.
I can tell you that the structural-related things do not change that often, unless they're, it's in response to a catastrophic event that may have occurred, or whether it's a weather incident, or you've become suddenly more earthquake-prone, or something along those lines. Whether or not this building would be considered an essential facility, that already comes with it heightened structural requirements anyway, so that would probably be on your side if you were planning for that in the future.
I appreciate that, that's, that's enough. That answers my question. And then I would just say to this board, this, it looks like a lovely south-facing roof, which would be great for solar in that wide-open downtown space. So I would love it if we could consider that, because when studying our various county facilities and where would be appropriate for solar, the orientation of the building is pretty important, and this one, just at a cursory glance, looks like it might be very well positioned for solar, without a lot of obstructions, so.
Mr. Murphy, just to reiterate, this, this plan is for twenty to thirty years, including
That's the question that was posed to the magistrate and court services for their foreseeable needs, whether somebody said, yes, in twenty years. I mean, the crystal ball is just so, so clear. We try to plan that. I mean, this, I think this facility is a good example, that there was additional space that we knew in the future you would ultimately be enclosing that and capturing it for other needs. So that, that is a, a normal process for, for us to, in a programming session, to ask those questions.
Thank you. To have a consensus to move forward. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We can't, we're going to take about a fifteen-minute break, and we'll come back in about fifteen minutes. I'm sorry. Well. (pause) Everybody back, we'll go back. Still in work session, the next up, school resource officers.
Madam Chair and Board members, this is an item, the Board Chair and I met with the Mayor and the Town Manager in Christiansburg a couple of weeks ago and talked about several issues that the town wanted some input and information on. One of the items that was discussed in that meeting was school resource officers and the fact that the county had just recently placed two SROs in schools out in, out in the unincorporated area of the county. And the town has, Town Police, Town of Christiansburg has Town Police Officers in several of the town schools. And we just had some discussion about how that was structured. After that meeting, the Chair and I were talking and thought, well, it would be good to hear from our chief elect, Chief Law Enforcement Officials as to what the thoughts were in terms of how they see school safety and the, and the issue of school resource officers in the county. So I know that Sheriff Parton met with Chief Sisson and with Chief Brewster in Blacksburg. And Sheriff, if you want to say a few words about that conversation, Chief Sisson's here tonight as well from Christiansburg. Appreciate you being here also this evening.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Mr. Meadows, Madam Chair. Thank Chief Sisson for coming with me. Chief Brewster was also wanting to be here, but he has given both, he's not available tonight, but he's given Chief Sisson and I a full latitude to follow their conversations. So, and our conversations are very brief. What you all are deciding on and what you do is totally out of our lane. What's in our lane is making sure that we've got those schools, those children, those almost adults, those teachers and all their staffs safe. And we do that the best we can. And in our opinion, just like everything else we do in this county, we do it better than the most. And we couldn't be any closer. So, and if Todd were here, Chief Brewster were here, he'd be telling you the same thing and so would Chief Bab. So I know there's some contentious issues going on, but those are out of our league. I am just blessed to have the board I have. You all saw the need for us and our need is great, especially with the distance that we have to cover. But like Chief Sisson and I talk all the time, that's what we do the best. If we're short, we can call and vice versa. And, you know, heaven help, if something bad happens, but we're all going to be there anyway. We have those agreements. We don't have any jurisdictional boundaries. When it needs to be taken care of in this county, we take care of it and we do it together. So that's the same way we operate with our schools. And whatever happens from there, like I say, is above our pay grade.
Chief Sisson, do we not want to add to that?
I'll just, I'll just make a few comments. The first, I'll say that the school resource officer program in our community is one of the best things that we do. We're making huge impacts in children's lives and we're, we're building that trust and relationship for those kids to grow up in our community and have a respect for police and being able to call upon us when we need them. So this program is very important to our community. Second of all, I feel very strong that Town of Christiansburg Police Officers should be in the town schools. I do feel very strong about that. That's, most of those kids are our kids in the Town of Christiansburg. I feel like we have an obligation, I do as the Police Chief in this community, is to protect them. And as the Sheriff stated, no matter what it takes, I can't control what this board decides or my Town Council decides. But what I can tell you is I have an obligation to the members of the Town of Christiansburg and those children, that we're going to provide protection because that's what we do.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll go around the room and see comments or questions that our supervisors may have. We'll start off Supervisor Bone.
Can't thank you enough for being here and sharing that information with us. We all value everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
I do know what she said and I know what you do because I used to do it. And I appreciate everything you do and how hard a job you do have. Are all the schools covered with resource offices now?
All the schools in the county are now, thanks to you all. With the last two, that completed all the strands. So we have one in every school in the county.
Thank you. I thought that was right, but I wanted to hear you say it out loud. That's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Fitchukelski.
I think, I think you said it best, Sheriff, that the need for SROs for the protection part of their program was, there was a greater need for the county schools because they are a distance away from additional help. The two towns are fortunate in that their personnel are in a smaller area and can respond quicker. So I feel really good that we've covered our county schools that are out in the unincorporated areas. I also, I think what this comes down to is a money thing. And I know, I believe it came up last meeting or the other meeting, to find out as to whether we were required by law to provide that. And did we ever get a definitive answer?
There's no law that I'm aware of that would require the board to provide a SRO.
Okay. Yeah, I, and I think like Chief Sisson, that schools within the town, I would think the town would definitely want their officers in there. But if it ever came down to it, that they wouldn't provide that service, then I would be willing to put a deputy in those schools. But that's as far as I would go. I would, I would think that- I would, I would think that, that the fact that Christiansburg has its own police force, that, that would be an overriding factor in them wanting their officers in those schools to be an example for their, the kids that live in the town. But that's where I stand on it.
Supervisor King.
Just want to thank both of y'all for being here. I do appreciate you. I do appreciate really personally, all the security that you give to the citizens of Montgomery County, not just the schools, but everybody. Now, number one, as an adult, you know yourself, when you have kids, you have to protect your kids. And that is the main focus right now.
Yes, sir.
Thank both of you, and Chief from Blacksburg, thank him.
Supervisor Demots.
Thank you both for being here. Good to see you, Chief Sisson. It's been a long time, and Hank, we see you pretty often. I appreciate the work that both of you are doing. And because Chief Brewster gave you the latitude, what was, what was his position relative to Blacksburg schools? Is it similar to both of yours?
In, in full agreement. And I, I won't speak for Mark, but he feels like Chief Sisson does. Without going into how we cover everything, I think both of them feel like we're, we're doing what we need to do.
I am proud to support your requests, Sheriff Parton. I'm very proud that this Board has done that. And I thank you for your position on it as well, Chief Sisson. Thank you both for being here tonight.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Well, you guys know I'm an advocate for school resource officers, and my, my dream would be to have one in every single school. You might ask why? Because things happen in seconds. And the reason that I am so passionate about this is because my two nieces were in school when Columbine happened. They lived in Littleton. And so one was in elementary school and one was in middle school, and they were locked down. As a teacher at Harding Avenue, you know, after all that happened, we did lockdown drills all the time. We were involved with a couple of things that happened within Blacksburg, where the whole school had to be locked down. And I really, really appreciated the school resource officers that we had come through Harding Avenue. Now, they couldn't be there every day, started out with dear officers that were making inroads with students. And my thing is, and it goes back to something that Chief Sisson said, if you put an officer in each school, the children identify with that officer, starting elementary up, the respect is built. And I think that's something that's really probably a little lacking, in my view. And I think that that's a way that we could build respect, you know, coming up through elementary all the way to high school. I think the children, what I saw in elementary schools, they loved the school resource officer. They love to be with the school resource officer, whether it be eating lunch, out on the playground, whatever. Those relationships are important. When I go by Prices Fork School and I see the Sheriff's Deputy car out there, I'm so happy it's there. And I get that if you're in the towns, and you don't have one in every school, it's closer. But I go back to looking at Blacksburg the way it is right now. The traffic is a mess. So if something were to happen at Harding Avenue and Kips, huh, you know, there's a little, there's a little problem getting there fast, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. So I understand and I respect that the two towns would want their own officers in there because the kids are going to know you guys. They're going to, guys and gals, like when they're out in public and they see you out in public, those are, they're, they're police officers. I sort of am with Supervisor Fitchukowski. I don't know what can be done because I know it all comes down to money, but in my opinion, all comes down to lives. And if something were to happen, I couldn't just say, well, you know, it was a money issue and we really couldn't afford to have one in every school. Granted, you could have one in every school and things can still happen. I get that. But I think having a school resource officer in every school, elementary up, to me is a very important thing, and I will keep advocating for it. I'm not sure how to handle the money situation, but to me, it's just an important part of public safety. And unfortunately, that's where we are in this day and time. So I want to thank both of you gentlemen, and also Chief of Police Blacksburg, for everything you do, every single day. And for putting our students and staff, employees of Montgomery County Public Schools where you have them, and really working for them. And if there's anything I can do, you know, I've talked about grants before because I said on the Criminal Justice Service Board, and I see all these people getting grants all the time, and a lot of them are repeat grants. I don't know what to do about money, but if there's anything I can do to work towards that goal, if that's what, you know, the towns, Town Police might want, I mean, I would be happy to, to try to do anything I could. But I just, I don't see myself backing off of wanting to have one in every school. I just feel really passionate about it. So that's where I stand.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. I think we are extremely blessed in Montgomery County to have such fine law enforcement agencies that work together. What I heard is it doesn't matter what happens, everyone is going to respond. And I appreciate your leadership and your collaboration, that you all work together. And what I'm hearing is, and I, and I agree with Vice Chair Biggs, it would be my, I would like to see resource officers in every school. I think they are a great program to have that relationship building, that respect with kids all the way up. I, I, you know, I'm an advocate for school safety, but what I'm hearing is that what you have is working. Is that correct? Is that the agreement or the consensus from the two Chiefs and the Sheriff that, that we are covered? And am I correct in the square footage of, of the coverage? I know because in the towns, there's like 15 miles square coverage per officer or 24 Blacksburg. Is that similar or close?
I mean, Town of Christiansburg is just over 14 squared miles, correct.
Okay, all right. So, and then compared to the Sheriff's Office, would it be about 350 square foot or?
It's actually about 366, give or take a couple of square miles.
All right, very good. So of course, we do appreciate all that you all do, and we are so fortunate to have you. Any other follow-up questions or concerns? Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight.
Thank you all for having us.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to come out of work session?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Fitchukowski.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Out of work session. Next on the agenda, items of consent. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Fitchukowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Moving on to new business. Do we want to add that to the end or to, are we adding?
The four resolutions to call for the public hearing, we, if you want to do that now, you can.
Well, let's go ahead. Do I have a motion? Do I need to do them all separately?
Uh, yes.
Okay, let me go back and, can we get that back? Pull that up. Do I have a motion for, to schedule, resolution for the, schedule the public hearing for the Agape Center Tax Exemption Request? Do I have to read the date? Octo, for Monday, October the 24th at 7:15 or soon thereafter to receive public comic on, or, comment on an ordinance designating the property located at 1175 Cambria Street, Northeast Christiansburg, Virginia, Tax Map Parcel 497-A95, owned by the Agape Center Corporation Incorporated, exempt from real estate taxes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Fitchukowski.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Do I have a motion to, for a resolution to schedule a public hearing on a proposed ordinance designating the property located at 130 Acres Farm Road, Christiansburg, Virginia, owned by the Free Clinic of the New River Valley, DBA, the Community Health Center of the New River Valley, exempt from real estate property tax? That be for Monday, October the 24th at 7:15 or soon thereafter.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Bone.
I will abstain because there may be a conflict of interest.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Fitchukowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
Do I have a motion for a resolution scheduling a public hearing on the proposed ordinance designating the property located at 4 East Main Street, Christiansburg, Virginia, owned by the Montgomery Museum and Lewis Miller Regional Arts Center Incorporated, exempt from realis, real property tax?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Fitchukowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And do I have a motion for a resolution scheduling a public hearing on the proposed ordinance designating the property located at 510 Roanoke Street, Christiansburg, Virginia, owned by the Mountain Empire Services of the, of the Southwest Incorporated, exempt from real property tax?
So moved.
For October 24th at 7:15.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Fitchukowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Marty, I'm on their board, well, I'm on N R V C S's board as the liaison. Aye.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Next up, resolution of the EDA Revenue Bond Issuance, Virginia Tech Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Fitchukowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Electronic Meeting Participation Policy Update.
So moved.
Second.
Can I ask a question? So it said 25% of meetings, does that include all the extra meetings that we have, like joint meeting with the school board or?
It wouldn't apply to us. That only applies to boards that don't meet as often as we do. So for us, it'd be two times.
It sort of sounded like the bigger of 25% or two.
No, I think it's, it's two times or 20, or no more than, no more than two times or no more than 25% if that's less than two times. Yeah. We, we, we don't meet enough. I mean, we, we.
We meet. Oh, I don't, that's why, 25%. Thank you.
So two times for no reason. You can, you can go remote as many times you want for health or someone you care for for health.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Fitchukowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
One question, is that calendar or fiscal year?
Calendar.
Thank you.
Next up, supplemental appropriation, school board.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Fitchukowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Category Reclassification FY 2023 Budget, School Board.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah.
Supervisor Bean.
I was just looking over it, and they want to take money out of their operation in maintenance to put over in instructional stuff. I mean, how much are they pulling out of maintenance? If I'm reading it right? Yeah, I mean, didn't we just, they want to pull it out of that and put it under operational, is that correct?
I think it's for the reclassification that that's, maybe Ms. Mano, Manano can come here and explain that to us for the school.
Good evening. That's actually going to be related to salaries and expenditures. It's not taking like capital maintenance funds that have been designated for that and moving it to instruction.
Frequently, at the end of the fiscal year, we do an action similar to this. They're cleaning this up in a proactive manner this year. It's not, the amount that we're moving is similar to amounts we've moved in the past at the end of the year.
Yeah, but it's just my concerns, we've had school board members come up here and talk about maintenance and all this stuff they got going on, and you're pulling it out of maintenance?
I understand. But it's not really related to the ma, it's related to the savings from maintenance employees that have had turnover or positions that haven't been filled or ha, are not filled, and that has been moved to instructional position.
So it's actually, is it actually all related to salaries and benefits for employees in these categorical areas?
A lot of it is. There is some that was moved, I'm sorry, I didn't bring the whole presentation. There was some that was moved for materials and supplies related to the purchasing of instructional materials. But again, that's kind of a reclassification within instruction as well.
I'm reading maintenance.
And I, and I think when the, I'm trying to help with that. I think when it says operations and maintenance, that includes all the personnel and operational cost for operations and maintenance. So yes, it is, I, I agree with what you're reading, but I think what they're doing is moving some of the personnel dollars.
Maybe they need to go back and redo this and then bring it back to us.
Can you describe what's in operation and maintenance? What functions are?
Yes, so each category has salary and benefits for that group of employees. So for example, operations and maintenance is going to contain all of our custodians, all of our facilities and maintenance and HVAC guys. I know there's another group I'm missing. Some technology technicians and technology employees is in that group, along with utilities and a small operations and maintenance budget, very small. So transportation is going to be bus drivers, mechanics, actually, there's a few mechanics in operations and maintenance as well. Instruction is not just instructional personnel. It's instructional personnel, it's the supplies, it's the principals, it's anything, I'll make sure I say this right, that's within the school building for personnel. The custodians excluded, sorry. But it would be from the principals and the secretary and the guidance, all of those positions. Admin, health and attendance is going to be, not all school board employees, but finance, human resources, personnel, purchasing, health, school nurses. Does that help by describing what else is in those categories? It's not just an operations maintenance, it's a whole big, broad.
It has nothing to do with your buildings, maintenance on buildings.
A very small piece of it. Our 80, 80 to 90% of our budget in each category is related to personnel. So to say that we could pull $646,000 from maintenance, that, that money would not be there to pull for maintenance. We just don't have that much.
It's, it's 80 to 90% all. It's, it's eighty to ninety percent all personnel from one category to the other. Personnel and personnel, am I saying that correctly?
I think so.
For, I think for the large degree, yes, and, and I, I guess one thing too, because Angie mentioned earlier, this is, this is something that we have traditionally done towards the end of the year, as you realize there's some miscategorizations, I, I don't know if that's the right word, but this is really a cleanup for your fiscal twenty-three budget to more accurately reflect where positions are, is that correct?
Correct, so in addition, when we actually go through and do the, calculate the raises, everybody did get the five percent, but sometimes how we estimate which categories they will fall in, it doesn't exactly line up in that manner, and so that is part of this as well.
So, sure, I understand too, so the operation and maintenance is just the category, and most of that, though, it has nothing to do with actual maintenance on the building, it's the salaries for people that are in operation and maintenance?
Yes.
That's our, that's our understanding.
Okay, and then we're going to take that six hundred and forty-six plus thousand and we're going to put it towards instruction, and instruction would be salaries for teachers, principals, supplies as well?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But a very small amount for supplies, I mean, it's mostly all personnel, mostly personnel.
Yeah, percentage wise, it's, salaries and benefits is our biggest piece of our budget by far.
Okay, any other questions or follow-up? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll, thank you, thank you Katie.
Ms. Fitchakowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next, operation green lights for veterans.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Do we want to talk about how that's going to come about, I think?
Absolutely, or maybe we should explain what that is.
Brad, do you want to?
Yeah, because he's been working on it.
Yeah, Brad St. Clair, when this idea was first presented as an initiative from NACO, and I know Vice Chair Biggs had mentioned it, several others I think have mentioned it to us as well, we decided to move some things forward with that, Brad?
Yes, I, I think the idea is to recognize the sacrifices of our military and also bring awareness to some of the challenges that they face when they return home, and also to shed a light on the, the, what I would call high rate of, of suicide amongst our veterans, so we want to get some lighting, some, some solar type lighting that would go out in front of our building and potentially the public safety complex that would illuminate green at night in, in honor of those folks, and we will do that for a period of time, we're thinking probably the twenty-two days, which was, signifies the twenty-two suicides on average per day that, that unfortunately we experience across the US with our military veterans, so that's the plan as we move forward.
So the resolution would declare October through Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty twenty-two, a time to salute and honor our veterans by encouraging all citizens in a patriotic tradition to recognize and honor our veterans by displaying a green light in their businesses and homes, and that was a VACO.
VACO.
National.
Phone.
Jennifer can put out some information on that so that the public knows, and I see Ann out there, it would be really cool to, you know, because they're going to find, what's that?
Why are your lights green?
It would be really good to put down what that is.
I've got green light.
Yeah, like where do we buy more green lights?
I got these at the Lowe's, but I have one so that each of us can light up our homes, our businesses, that we can show our support.
I have a question, do we have a budget associated with this project? And I'll, I'll, I'll ask the whole question and then give you the opportunity to answer. We've got, I know it's in the, towards the end of the period, but we'll have the Halloween event where we invite the public to come to this building, which would be a good infom, information campaign, it'd be cool if we could give out green lights to families there too, but that would require a significant budget.
We, we don't really have a budget identified for the procurement of the lights, fortunately they're not very expensive, and they, they cast a pretty wide flood, so it won't take many of them, and they are solar, so there's no real cost associated with running them, so the cost will be very minimum on that end as far as supplying bulbs or something, that's something we could check into.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion, madam clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Fitchakowski.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next up, workforce development professionals month.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Thank Vicki for writing this up.
Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Fitchakowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, National Community Planning Month, resolution to recognize community planning.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Fitchakowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Right, reports, county attorney.
I have no report, but I do want to just clarify, I did misspeak a little bit on the participation, remote participation it says, remote participation due to personnel matters limit each calendar year to two or two meetings or twenty-five percent held per calendar year rounded up to the whole number, whichever is greater, so you were right, so that would be, we average roughly twenty-four meetings a year, two a month, so that'd be six.
But does that include like the joint school board meetings?
Yeah, yeah, so I think at a minimum we're at, well, we're at twenty-three scheduled, because we only do one in December, and then there's a few we add, so in the six, seven number is probably where it is.
Thank you, I thought so.
Sure.
Very good, county administrator?
Just a couple items this evening, first, I want to recognize the efforts of our employment engagement, employee engagement committee, that is an employee-led committee, I think I've mentioned to you before, it's not driven by the leadership team, they put on the employee picnic this past Saturday, thank you for those that were able to come to the, to the event, we had a great turnout, great food, great participation, it was a wonderful event all around, and I just, kudos to, to those employees that worked so hard to make that a successful event. We have our first meeting of the NRV Passenger Rail Committee this Wednesday, Chair Blevins and I will be attending that over at the Regional Commission Office, looking forward to getting that moving forward, as somebody said the other day, getting that on track, so we'll get that moving, and lastly, I was just going to mention that I will be in Richmond a couple of times next week, I'll be in Richmond on Monday to participate in a couple of VOGMA meetings as a part of the VML Conference, and then I'll be back, right now, I'm scheduled to be back on Thursday to provide testimony to the State Corporation Commission on our broadband project, so hopefully after that we'll be moving that one forward as well, and that's all I have.
An extended work session?
Yes, ma'am, our extended work session this Saturday, be on the lookout for an agenda, that will be at Warm Hearth, we, this Saturday, yes, ma'am, October, starts at eight o'clock, eight o'clock with breakfast, and meeting starts at eight-thirty, and for those of you that have been over there for the Eggs and Issues events that they've had there, you just keep walking down that hall and they've got a really nice meeting room, appreciate them working that out for us to be able to use that on Saturday.
What about those of us that have not been there?
I'm going to send a very detailed map.
Oh, great, thanks.
Thanks to Vicki, Vicki found that, thank you Vicki.
All right, we'll start off, supervisors report, supervisor Shepherd.
Just a couple things, in our Economic Development Commission meeting this past week, Michael Geary and, I forget the ladies, is it Erica something from New York Community College, the ACE program?
Barnes.
They gave a presentation on the ACE program and, they gave a bunch of numbers that I won't even attempt to regurgitate, but it's a lot, I think it was a hundred and seventy students from Montgomery County this year, but anyway, the reason I brought this up is they now have T-shirts, and they said they'd be glad to get us T-shirts, and I thought maybe I could appoint or ask Mr. Meadows or Angie to maybe coordinate that and get sizes and all that, I didn't know what everybody wore, so I didn't, I didn't even attempt to do that.
We can do that.
The other thing I have is, and I don't have a date, but I know it's one of the Saturdays in October, is the Long Shot McCoy Fire Department Annual Pancake Breakfast is coming up, so just keep that in mind, that's all.
Okay. Supervisor Fitchakowski.
Just a couple things, first of all, the, I attended the county picnic, it was a perfect day, you couldn't ask for better weather, and there was a lot of fun things for everybody to participate in, but my favorite was the drone exhibition that the sheriff's office put on, it was quite impressive what they can do with those, and I kept thinking, what would it cost if we had to replace drones with a helicopter, and you're talking millions of dollars versus thousands of dollars, and very, very effective, they've got some very good pilots trained, I tried to get them to chase a buzzard, but they wouldn't do that, so I'll try next time. This is the, we're coming into the season where dinners are popping up, not just pancake breakfasts, but you all should be receiving invitation to the New River Valley Regional Commission's annual dinner, that's going to be held in Radford this year on October the twenty-seventh, and also Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority will be having their dinner, I'm sure they, those invitations will be going out, that, that one's not till November the third, and just to update, we got our final information on our solar project for the Solid Waste Authority, and it is moving forward, so should be some big changes there, and I can't think of a better use for a closed dump than to put solar on it, so we'll see where that goes.
Did you say October twenty-seventh for the Regional Commission Dinner?
Say it again.
October twenty-seventh for the Regional Commission Dinner, was that the date you gave?
Yes, October twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
Yep.
Supervisor King.
Go ahead, no report, I do want to tell the employees, appreciate all their hard work for Saturday, it was a wonderful time, everybody done really well down there, and I think everybody enjoyed herself, and I can't go, but you're invited to come to Riner Fire Department Saturday, October the first for, it's a shrimp dinner this time, from two to six.
When we're done with the extended work session, everybody can just go to Riner, that's right.
That's all.
Supervisor Demott.
No report.
Supervisor Bone.
I also enjoyed the picnic, felt a little peer pressure from some of the employees to put a tattoo, temporary tattoo on my neck, good thing it came off, but it, it was all fun and games, and I really did enjoy, you know, asking lots of questions about the fire truck and, and Michael Geary's truck and the command thing, and seeing the drones and the heat sensing part of the drones and stuff like that, and the park is beautiful, what a great asset, thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Jennifer for all her work along with, you know, the animal care and adoption center staff, I'm just so proud of that facility and the staff there and what was created and what an invaluable community asset it is, and it's great to have it publicized that way, so thank you for all of that. Craig and I attended the VACA regional meeting last Thursday, and it was held in Franklin County at their Center for Advanced Learning and Enterprise, which actually is a really nice center, they've got down there, and it was a well-attended meeting, Craig and I were the only ones from Montgomery County, but it was interesting, most of the focus was on legislative priorities, and it, it was so much that we all have in common, there's a lot of talk, of course, about broadband and funding for education and, you know, our lack of, and then EMS came up, so there were a lot of things that we all shared in common, and again, I'm just so impressed with the VACA staff and what Dean Lynch has done with that staff, you know, Katie was here tonight, but what Dean has done is he's grown his people, like Craig has grown his leaders here, and they are all so very, very capable when they go out into the different communities in Virginia, and so it was, it was, it was really a good event, and coming home, Craig, Craig told me I could come home the back way, so I wouldn't have to go on eighty-one, and it was absolutely beautiful, it was through Franklin County to Floyd County to Pilot to Christiansburg, and you're like the only car on the road, and it'd be great for sports cars, you know, I was thinking about, wow, you know, this is really cool, RAV four, okay, but a sports car would be good, but anyway, if any of you want to do a trip like that, I can't imagine what it's going to be like when the leaves change, I mean, it was so pretty.
It was an absolutely gorgeous ride.
It was just beautiful, I'm so glad I came back the back way with that. Tomorrow morning, the, the authority from the Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Airport is going to meet from nine to one, and we're going to be interviewing three firms that are interested in trying to get the bid for our strategic master plan, we're going to be updating a plan, I think the last time it was done is two thousand and nine, and since we have extended the runway, we really want to move to the next part, what can we do with this airport next as far as growing the, the number of planes that come in, hangars, and wrapping economic development around it, and so we're going to, I guess, decide on one of the firms, we're going to interview all three tomorrow, so that's what will be coming up next at the airport, and I think that's all I have.
Very good, I'd like to also congratulate our employee engagement committee, not only for wonderful picnic with everybody laughing and eating snow cones and enjoying the drone demonstrations, but for what they, their efforts and hard work that they do all year long to encourage and support our employees, and I, I told them that, you know, very impressive, that it's really a family atmosphere, and they, the employees love it, and it was really nice to hear lots of our employees tell us how much, tell me how much they love working for Montgomery County, and they were sharing stories of people, we've got employees that have been here twenty-plus years, and that they truly love serving the citizens of Montgomery County, and we're so blessed that they are our direct representatives of this board, and that they do it with such care and dedication, so we greatly thank the committee, and we thank all of our employees for always serving and striving their best to serve our citizens. Congratulations for the VACA, and thank you Jennifer for all of your hard work for that, for the, with the Animal Care and Adoption Center, Return to Home, that is a great, a great program, the social media, reuniting lost pets with citizens, of, of course, like they said, there's no place like home, so it's a great, that they have a success rate of about eighty-eight percent, and this week Craig and I also had, were invited to a round table discussion with US Senator Mark Warner with WEAN, talking about drone delivery and the expansion and the challenges, and that was a very great discussion of, of ways to move forward, because we are the future here in Montgomery County with Virginia Tech and all our assets, and then just want to remind everyone that the Christiansburg Fire Prevention Parade is October fourth at seven PM in Main Street down in Christiansburg, and with that being said.
Can I add one thing about Senator Warner?